I M D is action on ZTA 1907 telecommunications towers limited use. The Fed Committee recommended approval with amendments which were further amended by the full council. Let me just add a few remarks and I'll turn it over to the chairman and to Ms. Ndu. I realize that there's a lot of concerns in this area, both about the policy and the process across the county. Implementation is of 5G is one of the most complex and technical issues that have been in front of the county council while I've been here. And I know two years ago, I remember being told by the administration that they would use the vast technical staff in their shop to send us an executive ZTA a while back that would comply with the FCC order, but we'd never seen it. And I just want to mention that as a, as a benchmark. On the process, I've also heard complaints that this legislation is being rushed. And I, I just want to correct the record. In fact, an iteration of the ZTA has been before the county council for over four years because an earlier version of the ZTA was debated during our last term. And this very ZTA has been before us for an unusually long time. It was introduced nearly two years ago in the fall of 2019. So it hasn't technically been rushed at all, quite the contrary. The county councils held hearings and a town hall and conducted public outreach on this legislation. We've held multiple work sessions, first in the Fed Committee and then in the full council. Second, this is an unusual matter in that the council's been put in an unfortunate position because of the need to comply with a federal order. We have a federal agency who's told us we have to comply with their order and that we're not allowed legally to consider certain community concerns. So regardless of the merits of the issue and how anybody feels about it, I imagine none of my colleagues like being told by a federal agency, we have to take action and that our authority is very limited in the details of how we respond to that order. But that's where we are. So I want everybody to understand that as well, regardless of how you feel about the issue. We don't really have the option of remaining out of compliance with federal regulations surrounding 5G. I, I mentioned yesterday at our press conference that if we don't pass something, we put the county at risk of our lawsuit. And within a few hours, I heard multiple times from multiple opponents, all well-meaning individuals, some I've known for a very long time saying, that's not true. People are entitled to their own opinion on this, but please understand that all of us on the council are supposed to follow legal advice from our county attorney in his office. And yesterday's message on my phone from the county attorney to me says, yes, unless we liberalize our citing rules, we are vulnerable to a legal challenge. So that's the opinion of our county attorney and we're, we're bound to follow that. Everyone's entitled to disagree with the elements of various elements of the ZTA. I don't agree with every single detail either, and that's common in complicated legislation. But you can't really argue that we have the opportunity to continue to delay and take no action at all because doing so puts the county at legal risk. And fourth, a majority of us for years have supported multiple legal challenges in an effort to test the strength of the FCC order. And the county's now exhausted our legal options in multiple court cases while other neighboring jurisdictions have moved forward in this area. And as was mentioned during the previous, previous item by council member Navarro, the pandemic has shown us how our, how much our society relies more than ever on digital infrastructure and the deep and persistent divides between those who have reliable access and those who have not, as well as other disparities in our society that have been spotlighted during this pandemic. So I know there's going to be a variety of opinions on this ZTA. I just want everybody to know that A, this has not been rushed. And B, my colleagues have worked very hard to make the ZTA better to protect residents and the environment. We've adopted numerous amendments to address concerns about height, preferential placement, poll proliferation, and tree loss minimization. And regardless of what happens today, we can always come back and monitor the implementation and amend the ZTA in the near future because legislating, legislation is an iterative process. So thanks very much to the Fed Committee and all my colleagues for their work on this. Let me turn it over to Chairman Reamer.
Thank you, Council President Hucker. Appreciate your comments. I will try to be very brief, but I would like to just confess here. Before I began working on this issue, I did not know how my, my smartphone worked. I thought when I made a call, maybe a signal was going from my phone to the person I was talking to. I thought maybe my phone was sending a signal to space, to a satellite. I really had no idea how it worked. What I've learned is that our phones, our devices communicate with antennas that are on buildings typically. And when you drive around the county and you look at all of our apartment buildings and our office buildings, strip centers, typically you will see on top of those buildings, small antennas, or I should just say antennas. And that is what our phones are talking to. That's how the signaling works. Those antennas are connected to a fiber network and that is how this whole thing works. Well, that is not a sufficient system for the future of wireless. The future of wireless requires the antennas to be closer to us. They can't be a mile away, the way they can be now. They can't be two miles away, the way they can be now. They have to be hundreds of feet away. So if we want to allow our wireless networks to grow, and they have to grow because I think we all know the amount of data that we're all using today is exponentially larger than the amount of data that we used to use. If we want to be able to continue to have the best coverage, the best of service, we've got to allow these antennas to come closer to us on utility poles, on light poles. And that's what this ZTA is seeking to accomplish is to allow for small antennas to be placed where they're needed. It's not something that, you know, most of us will ever think about once it happens. We don't typically think about what is on those poles today. There's a lot of equipment on those poles today. It's not something that we're going to relish looking at, just like none of us loves looking at our home Wi-Fi router. However, we rely upon that router for our professional lives, our social lives, our entertainment. You know, they're a deep part of living in the world today. And these antennas will be no different. Many of the criticisms that we're hearing are founded in health claims. And I just refer everyone to the FDA, the National Cancer Institute, the CDC, the American Cancer Society, the World Health Organization. Scientific authorities are very clear that there is no compelling evidence of a health concern from our devices. And so if you accept that, if you trust the science, then what is the argument to restrict the infrastructure? What is the argument to have an inadequate wireless network? So that is how, that's where we are now. We are, we are proposing to allow for the deployment of more infrastructure so the county will not be left behind. And I really want to thank my colleagues, especially council members Alvaro and Rice. You know, the last council struggled with this mightily. And at the beginning of this council, you both co-sponsored as leads on this zoning change and provided the force that we needed to move forward. Council members Fritzen and Juwondo, our detailed work at committee produced a very thoughtful zoning change with a lot of the community protections that were requested. And I think you helped craft something that council members can stand behind and they can explain and they can defend. So this is not an easy vote. I'm still getting, you know, inquiries from chatter about neighborhood listservs and things like that. But I always rely on the adage, people want progress without change. And unfortunately, that's really not up, not usually the, the, an option. So I thank my, my colleagues for their careful deliberation. I thank the community for all of the participation. And we have an amended zoning change, zoning text amendment from the Fed Committee for the council's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Juwondo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the chair's comments and the work at the Fed Committee and all the work of staff on this. This is, to put it mildly, I think I know why our former colleague Jeff Sykes retired. I think Ms. Ndu and I were talking about that. I just wanted to ask Ms. Ndu, you know, I, I often, I think people know, you know, if you don't know, I am an attorney, I'm barred in the state of Maryland and the only one on the council right now. And so one of the things that's been particularly challenging for me is the litigation. And when we considered this last time, you know, last year, pre-pandemic, there were several cases that we were party to that were pending. Several of those have been resolved, some of which partially in favor, partially in not. There is a current lawsuit that is before the DC Circuit of the Court of Appeals, federal courts. And one of the highest, some consider the second highest court in the land. It appeals directly to the Supreme Court. That is challenging directly the FCC's 5G radio frequency guidelines. The oral arguments in this case were heard in January. There is an imminent ruling pending from this, again, the second highest court in the land. Two Obama-appointed federal judges in the oral arguments, you know, which is often common, raised significant concerns with the fact that the FCC has not updated their safety guidelines since 1996. And one judge, Judge Wilkins, went so far as to assert that he was inclined to rule against the FCC because there had been no reference to the work, two working groups, federal working groups that are charged with reviewing the safety of these guidelines. So I just want to ask Ms. Ndu, if, what are the plaintiffs asking for as far as relief in this case? And if they were successful, would that potentially impact the, what we would have, be able to do here at the local level?
Sure. So, well, good afternoon, council members. So the plaintiff in this case is Environmental Health Trust. And what they asked the court to do is to remand vacate, or they asked the court to order the FCC to remand vacate and update their RF exposure guidelines, which are 25 years old. So there's two things that can happen. One, if the court rules in the petitioner's favor, then of course the FCC could appeal that to the Supreme Court. So it would keep going. But the other thing that could happen is the FCC would have to reexamine its RF standards, which would of course slow down the 2018 FCC order. I can't say for sure if that means the order itself, like in full would be repealed. But if the court does remand vacate and order them to update their standards, they would have to do so.
I appreciate you, but that's, so that's a possibility. It is a possibility that the 2018 order, which we are presumably acting upon and because we fear litigation, could be rescinded or, or put, could be put on hold while the guidelines are updated. That is a potential outcome.
It's a potential outcome, although I will say the order itself is pretty long. So they might only, you know, they could only pause like that part, but still encourage deployment. It, it would depend how, exactly what the court order said as well.
Got it, got it. Thank you, I appreciate that. So, you know, so for me, you know, I, I think, you know, I've weighed on this a lot. And I don't know whether it's safe or not, and we're not allowed to consider it under the current order. But what I do know is that technology advances a lot in 25 years. And, you know, and council member Reamer referenced the American Cancer Society. I'm going to read from their website. At this time, there's no strong evidence that exposure to RF waves from cell phones, towers, caused any noticeable health effects. However, this does not mean that RF waves from cell phone towers have been proven to be absolutely safe. Most experts, organizations agree that more research is needed to help clarify this, especially for any possible long-term health effects. That's on the website for the American Cancer Society. Again, I don't know, but that's part of the problem. I don't know. And that there is a current case in the second highest court in the land that could totally change what we do. And I voted in committee to move this forward because I think we needed to have a full council discussion about it. And reasonable, and we will need to do 5G and wireless technology will advance and it will happen at some point. And it already has happened. We have 5G in commercial centers. We have in our municipalities, there's some deployment. It will, there will be technological advance and it should happen. But it bothers me and history tells me that, you know, I don't know if it's safe, but I do know that if it's not, industry wouldn't care. I know that. And so I think taking a step to allow the court to decide, which could happen imminently in the month of August, is a prudent step. If they uphold the order, I'll be the first one to vote for it next day. Because we got to move forward and we have to be, remain competitive. There are advantages. I hope that they update the guidelines. And so for that reason, I can in good conscience support the final ZTA today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rice.
So it's really interesting. You know, it, it's interesting because when people talk about healthcare effects, they never talk about the fact that this cell phone right here is more of a risk of RF transmission than a tower would be. So if you're really concerned about health effects, put down your cell phones, get away, take out your microwave ovens from your house, all those kinds of things. So let's just be real, right? So let's not be the alarmist who tries to make it seem as though, you know, we're doing something that's going to jeopardize the health and safety of our community. Many of us have thought about that. And although we can't think about it in terms of how we vote on this particular ZTA, it doesn't mean that we don't think about it. We're still human beings. We still have families, we have children who will be near these things. So we of course care about it. So let's just be real about the fact that, yes, we consider this. We're the same council who, you know, banned, or who made it mandatory to do radon testing. Why? Because radon is proven, right? Proven to cause cancer, to cause lung cancer. And so we took steps. I led that effort. So we do care about health. We do care about causing cancer. We are concerned about those kinds of things. So yes, while we can't in consideration of moving this ZTA forward, say that this is a reason why we shouldn't do it, it doesn't mean that we don't think about it, that we don't care about it. And we wouldn't move forward if we thought that we were doing something that was dangerous. Period. So let me just make that clear. Now, when it comes to access, I've seen so many people who've talked about racial equity and social justice. And so I want to talk about the myriad of emails and calls that we've gotten into the office. And they say, oh, it hasn't been analyzed for racial equity and social justice. Well, the reality is this, it has been. We for a long time said, it's one of the reasons why we passed the racial equity and social justice law because we identified so many things in our communities that were disparate for those people who were of lower socioeconomic status and who were oftentimes disconnected from technology. And that is our black and brown community, our communities that always struggle. The thing is this, is that even with robust fiber, and many of you know, I led the National Association of Counties broadband task force. So for over a year, we worked on comprehensive methodology to achieve racial equity and social justice when it came to getting to our neighborhoods that didn't have access to high-speed broadband. The reality is, is that even in those urban areas, the people can't afford it. And so the key is, is that having this 5G will actually give an alternative. It is not the same as having hardwired 5G going into your homes. But at least it's something that gets that connectivity there that gives them a fighting chance that they don't have right now. And while we continue to work with the federal government on ways to affect that change, the reality is, is that folks still get left behind. So if you are a person who wrote in and who cares about racial equity and social justice, you should be supporting 5G. You should be rallying and saying, we need to do this for all of the poor, black and brown people who have no access to high quality and high-speed broadband right now. So don't write me again, talking about racial equity and social justice without knowing the facts. That's the reality. That's what our folks experience each and every day. I've talked to them. I've worked over the past year across this country, talking to folks who don't have that access. So stop it, okay? If you don't like it, if you feel as though it's, you know, something that's dangerous and that's how you feel, I completely understand that. But please don't hide behind the auspices of racial equity and social justice when in reality, it's the exact opposite. The reality is, is that the majority of people are looking for ways to try and keep their families connected, so much so that they would bring their children and put them in the parking lots of their jobs just so they could log on to Zoom and make sure that they had access to their classwork and their classmates. That's what happened during this pandemic. That's what we saw. That's why the impetus is upon us to make this happen. That is why we need to move forward with this bill. And we need to make sure that we're striking a blow when it comes to ensuring that we can get affordable, high-quality access for people throughout this country, not just here in the state of Maryland. Just lastly, when it comes to, you know, Councilmember Juwondo's comment about the court case, but there are always going to be court cases. There are always going to be. There's, there's going to be another court case filed shortly that I've heard about in California. So, you know, court cases will continue to pop up. If you want to keep waiting for court cases to be exhausted, you'll never get it done. The reality is, is that you have to move at some point. Now, as more information comes about, obviously, if a court case comes down and changes where things are, not just us here in Little Montgomery County, but across the United States of America, we'll have to make adjustments based on what that ruling is. So this affects more than just Montgomery County. So this isn't something that is just isolated to us. This is something that would be impactful on the entire country and everyone who has these regulations in place. And like I said, again, it doesn't stop. There is no such thing as an exhausting of all the options. There will always be things for those opponents who just feel as though they don't like it or fear that it may cause some sort of risk, that will continue to fight that. That's the American way. That's how our court system is set up and structured. But we can, at the same time, allow that to dictate for us what it is that we need to do if we believe that it's the right thing moving forward. And so I'll say this, I believe it's the right thing moving forward. I believe under the auspices of racial equity and social justice, it is the right thing for us to do. I believe when it comes to supporting our folks in our rural areas that I represent in the agricultural reserve, it is the right thing to do. I believe that when it comes to the telecommunications efforts that are going to be there and the technology that needs to be there to help move our economy forward, that it's the right thing to do. I believe that this ZTA is the right way for us to move forward. Back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Katz.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I, I want to be brief. I had made a statement last week. I have not changed my mind. I'm not going to vote for this legislation. I sincerely appreciate all of the efforts and, and of all of my colleagues and all their hard work. I believe that we should wait until mid-September. We're not talking about waiting forever. We're talking about literally a few weeks. In the meantime, we should be getting back the court case from what Councilmember Juwondo was discussing. I don't believe we'd be harming anyone by doing that. The, and I believe that if we did wait until mid-September, that we would have more answers before us. I, I understand that there, I understand that this legislation has been made better by the amendments. I voted for those amendments, knowing, believing that, that this legislation was going to go forward. And you come up with the best legislation you can, even though you're not supportive of the legislation. So I did support those amendments. But I believe that we are making an error by voting on this at this time until we know what the outcome of, the, the one case that Councilmember Juwondo had discussed and others. I believe we should wait until mid-September. And because of that, I will be voting against this legislation. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I turn it back to you.
Council Vice President Alvaro.
Thanks. I know we're way over. Disappointed in some of the comments of my colleagues, but I'll let that go for now. I think that this has clearly been deliberated and discussed for over six years. And as I've stated publicly before, I really commend our central staff who've done a fantastic job in coordinating a lot of complex information, which unanimously voted out of committee by all of my colleagues. And so I want to thank them for, and the Fed Committee, all of its members for their deliberative efforts and not feeding into the misinformation that has been sent through a variety of different means to our residents. We of course care about the public safety of our residents. And we also have to acknowledge and understand that the innovations in technology are critical, not just for public safety, but also for economic development. And every other jurisdiction across this country is wrestling with these similar issues. And most particularly in our region have already advanced and have already moved forward. And so we're behind. And so we can, as Councilmember Rice noted, wait for all of the myriad of court cases, which will continue to move forward. And I have a high degree of confidence in this presidential administration and the appointments that he has made, both within the FCC and in the other corresponding agencies who are responsible for making these decisions and doing what's best in the interest of all of our county residents and all of our citizens across this country. And so I have a high degree of confidence in our federal system. And I also have a high degree of confidence that by passing this legislation today, we will advance racial equity by ensuring better Wi-Fi and better connectivity for parts of our community that don't have access to it. And that it will also lead to a lot of other tremendous benefits as well. The pros, in my humble opinion, significantly outweigh the cons. And waiting until September is not going to garner any other significant pieces of information other than delaying what has been a conversation that's been going on for six years. So this is a difficult vote. I know there are people that are passionately opposed to this. I respect their positions, but in my estimation, this is progress and something that we as a community need to move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Navarro.
Okay, Mr. President. Let me first thank the Fed Committee, all of the stakeholders, all the constituents that have chimed in and Councilmembers Rice and Alvaro for also the sponsorship of this, of this ZTA. As everybody knows, I didn't, I didn't arrive at this point easily because when we first began to have this conversation, there were a lot of outstanding questions. And so we've had this conversation now for a good, I think it's what, five years or something, I guess, since we first began to have some conversations. And, you know, I, I like to take my time. I like to listen to, to different perspectives. I also like to understand what is happening, not just locally, but regionally and globally. Because inevitably, we are in sort of a protagonist position here in Montgomery County when it comes to this region, when it comes to the country and when it comes to the world. And a lot has happened. So much has happened in 2020 that has come to, I think, show us a lot of different kinds of permanent changes that are not going to go away. And there's a lot that is being examined right now. You know, what's going to happen with telecommuting? What is going to happen with telehealth? What were the lessons that we learned regarding addressing issues of disparities that were positively impacted by the use of technology? These things have been accelerated. And I mentioned this earlier in another item. The pandemic has accelerated a lot of these changes in a permanent way. So I understand, because I was one of those people who thought, well, maybe we can take some time, maybe we can think about this, et cetera. This experience of this pandemic, seeing it from all of the different perspectives and for us being responsible to address all of the policy areas at once, has come to show me in particular that there is no way that we can stand in the way of this change. It has happened. And during a lot of conversations at this, you know, council of governments retreat with elected leadership from all over the region, one of the things that came up a few times because we were focusing on issues of equity was how now equity sometimes gets co-opted to be used accordingly to, you know, to push or justify certain positions. How can we sit here and somehow say the better access somehow is rooted in inequity and it works against our push for racial equity and social justice? When we have seen time and time and time and time again, not only research, but we saw with our own eyes during this pandemic, how it is about access, how it is about shared prosperity. That's what we're trying to achieve here. And so, yes, I know these moments are very difficult because it is groundbreaking in many ways and the change is happening so rapidly. I understand that. But at some point, we're going to have to decide, like, do we choose to stay behind? Or are we going to step up and meet this moment, which by now, it's almost like already left us behind? That's where we are. So I associate myself with some of the comments of my colleagues that, you know, it's a new administration. I feel better about that. And there will be things that maybe we will have to. And there will be things that maybe we will have to tweak. But to just pretend that somehow 2020 didn't happen, to pretend that we don't have to rely, God forbid, we have to get into another major wave. I mean, for me, the thought of us in the Government Operations of the fiscal policy committee, having conversations about, you know, regulations about teleworking and pilots for teleworking and in the education committee, talking about possible, you know, online education, what would it look like in the future? And literally within 24 hours, we had to do it all, all of it. That is just so extraordinary. And so this, to me, is something that we have to do. Other jurisdictions around the region have already done it. Why would we in Montgomery County choose to say no and wait and wait and wait? So again, I, I absolutely respect all of the stakeholders who have contacted us, both pros and cons. I totally respect that. This, like I have done in all of my public life, this vote is not because, well, you know, somebody's going to give her some contribution or not. This is based on meeting a moment that we cannot ignore. And that is why I think that, you know, the original CTA has been amended significantly and I appreciate that. And I will be voting yes to the amended CTA today. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Rehm.
Thank you. Appreciate my colleagues' comments. I just wanted to add, we're talking about the science here a bit. One of the things I've had to get my head around is the scientific method as a whole. The scientific method always calls for more research. It rarely states something as an absolute certainty. It always says more research is helpful. What it also does is it looks at all of the studies together. And one of the things that we've been experiencing through this conversation is the selective use of certain studies, constantly being, you know, brought forward and given disproportionate weight by certain actors. What the scientific agencies do, the National Cancer Institute, the FDA, CDC, the World Health Organization, what they do is they look at all the studies and they add them all up into a ledger and they say, what is most compelling? What studies bring the strongest evidence? That is the scientific process here. And there's no real argument among those agencies. They all arrive at the same conclusion. There is an institute based in Bethesda. It's called the National Center for Radiation Safety. It's headquartered in Montgomery County. The scientists there have been working on these issues for decades. I've spoken with them. They are very clear that the radio frequency emissions on one side of the spectrum are a very, very limited risk and those on the other side are very high risk. That's your X-rays and all those other things. But the spectrum kind of breaks in half and everything on the non-ionizing side has been found over more than 100 years now, not to be dangerous. It's the same thing as AM/FM radio. And when radio was started, people said that birds were dropping out of the sky from radio waves. You know, it's our home Wi-Fi. It's non-ionizing radiation. If you believe it's dangerous, you should turn off your Wi-Fi. And, and honestly, if we really believed it was dangerous, we should ban Wi-Fi. I mean, do we really believe it's dangerous? No. If we did, we would act, you know? the scientific method, you have to be comfortable with a little bit of more research as needed as a, as a concept. At the same time, trusting in, I'm willing to trust in the authorities that are charged with this responsibility. Colleagues know, at times, I have taken controversial views, controversial positions on issues like polystyrene. We banned polystyrene because I was convinced that there was an issue there. We banned lawn pesticides, you know, but chemicals and radio, radio frequency waves are extremely different. And that's something that the chief scientist explained to me. You know, a chemical could have unknown impacts. Radio frequency waves generally have very known impacts, whatever part of the spectrum they're from on the non-ionizing side. So in any event, I think with the NIH, the FDA, the National Center for Radiation Safety, all headquartered in Montgomery County, we would be well advised to follow their guidance. There are thousands of employees who are our constituents. And last thing I'll say, there is a correlation between the extreme views on this issue and other issues like vaccine criticism, anti-vax and anti-5G. There is common ground there. There are 5G conspiracies about microchips being implanted in vaccines. You've heard about that. This is what our community is being inundated with, day in and day out, with this disinformation. And our job is to sift through it all. Thank you.
In Ontario is the former head of Microsoft Canada, Frank Clegg. He has gained valuable insight into the machinations of the tech industry.
I've been in the technology industry all my career and I've seen the tremendous benefits that technology can provide. My concern is nobody can say that it's safe. All my industry and all government agencies say is there's no proof of harm. And to my mind, that's not the same as saying it's safe.
Mr. Clegg points out the safety standard only protects people from thermal damage that can occur through overheating. But scientists have demonstrated that radiation emitting devices can cause DNA damage without heating tissue. These are non-thermal effects.
Unfortunately, the safety standards in, in North America and in Australia are, are based on this theory that's many decades old, that if tissue doesn't get heated, then it can't cause harm. And that's just out of date. And what the biologists tell us and have shown in many, many experiments, and again, peer-reviewed published papers, that there is damage done at the DNA level and from a biological standpoint, is non-thermal radiation can cause and does cause harm to humans.
For example, there is strong evidence to suggest that mobile phones can damage sperm as might occur when a male keeps his smartphone in his pocket.
If you take sperm from a healthy man and you put sperm in one test tube, it gets no exposure to a mobile phone and the other gets exposure. The mobile phone exposed sperm die faster, have more damage to their mitochondrial DNA, which is the engine that makes the cell run. And studies around the world consistently find the heaviest cellphone users have the lowest sperm count. Those studies have not been considered recently in, in reviews and there are new data emerging all the time.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for having this hearing. We've heard from a lot of witnesses, from you today and others previously, about the very important potential of 5G technology. It promises to bring us a new era of connectivity with internet speeds as much as five times faster than what we have today with much lower latency and that's all a good thing. But 5G, as you well know, also uses higher frequency waves that don't travel as far and will rely on a network of hundreds of thousands, potentially millions of small cell sites. And the question then is, are there any health implications? Any public safety implication to those additional sites that are likely to be located close to homes, schools, workplaces and closer and closer to the ground? Correct?
Correct, Senator. Yes.
So in December of 2018, I sent a letter to FCC Commissioner Carr, asking him to cite for me recent scientific studies demonstrating the safety of this technology. What research has been done? Where has it been published and compiled? He has essentially failed to do so and just echoed the general statements of the FDA, which shares regulatory responsibility for cellphones with the FCC. If you go to the FDA website, pretty unsatisfactory, there basically is a cursory and superficial citation to existing scientific data saying, quote, "The FDA has urged the cellphone industry to take a number of steps, including support additional research on possible biological effects of radio frequency fields for the type of signal emitted by cellphones." I believe that Americans deserve to know what the health effects are, not to prejudge what scientific studies may show. And they deserve also a commitment to do the research on outstanding questions. So my question for, for you, particularly Mr. Gillan and Mr. Perry, how much money has the industry committed to supporting additional independent research? I stress independent research. Is that independent research ongoing? Has any been completed? Where can consumers look for it? And we're talking about research on the biological effects of this new technology.
Thank you, Senator. I think, thank you for your focus on the issue. Safety is paramount and as you alluded to, we rely on the expert agencies, rely on the findings of the FDA and others as to the requirements to keep all of us safe. There are no industry-backed studies, to my knowledge, right now. Happy to visit with you as to what opportunities you think there needs to be more studies and we're always for more science. We also rely on what the scientists tell us.
So essentially, the answer to my question, how much money? Zero.
I can sort of only follow up with you, Senator. To my knowledge, there's no active studies being backed by industry today.
Anybody else know of industry commitments to, to back research, fund it, support it, to ascertain scientifically the health effect?
Senator, I'm not aware either, but I do know that with small cells especially, you're going to have lower power levels. And of course, as, as from a carrier perspective, you want to be able to manage interference so that that interference is the lowest interference possible. So I would, I would think that some of those studies or some of that information could be utilized in, in looking at the health consequences. But no, I'm not aware of any.
So there really is no research ongoing. We're kind of flying blind here so far as health and safety is concerned. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I've spent over 40 years in the technology industry. My most recent position was President of Microsoft Canada and I've seen the tremendous benefit technology can provide. I've also seen the potential harm if technology is not used correctly. In my opinion, our current implementation of wireless technology is not safe and I'm especially concerned with our plans for 5G. I don't make this statement lightly. I've met with experts from institutions such as Harvard, Yale, Columbia and the University of Toronto, and I've met with an expert advisor to the World Health Organization and one of the lead scientific writers for Al Gore's team that won the Nobel Prize. Over 250 scientists from 40 countries signed a formal appeal to the World Health Organization and the United Nations member states, expressing their concern over the harmful effects of wireless technology and added an additional appeal for the effects of 5G, especially the effects on children. Hundreds of peer-reviewed scientific papers have been published demonstrating harm to humans and the environment. This evidence includes increase in cancer, sperm damage, reproductive harms, memory and learning deficits, especially in children, and damage to our DNA, nervous systems and the cells in our bodies. Unfortunately, Health Canada and the FCC are stuck in the 1920 science that states tissue must be heated to be harmed. The last update from Health Canada of our safety guidelines was deeply flawed. 5G has all the issues associated with 2, 3 and 4G plus some additional concerns. Because of the technology limits, 5G will require significantly more antennas and they will be significantly closer to our homes, schools and places of work. We have one instance where a small cell antenna has been installed 20 meters from a child's bedroom. Any lamp post, telephone post or hydro pole is a candidate for a potential 5G small cell antenna. In addition, 5G technology uses millimeter waves for the first time. These frequencies are similar to those used by the US and Israeli military in crowd control systems. Now, scientists hired by my industry state that the power is significantly higher in these active denial systems. That may be true, but I'm not sure it's relevant. We have no clue of the potential harm from exposing people 24 hours a day, seven days a week to millimeter waves. In fact, there has been no testing to prove and ensure us that 5G technology is safe to humans and to our environment. That is why we're calling for Health Canada to do a comprehensive review of the science-based evidence. This review should be based on the international standards used to evaluate and analyze scientific research, should consist of an independent panel that has appropriate resources. This type of review has never been conducted by Health Canada. There is a better alternative. Fiber optic and wired connections are up to 100 times faster, do not emit radiation, therefore they're safer, they're more reliable, they're more resilient and they're more protective of our security and privacy. The IEEE has stated that wireless technology will continue to consume 10 times more energy than their wired counterparts. Our federal governments gain billions of dollars in revenue in spectrum auctions and ongoing licensing fees, but there has never been a complete analysis of the total costs from wireless technology. That's why we're calling for a total economic analysis of the potential revenue versus the economic burden from wireless technology. These costs should consist of, but not be limited to, increase in healthcare costs, the cost of lost productivity due to health effects and the cost in breaches of privacy and security, as well as the cost in the harm to our environment. Some applications need a wireless connection, but the majority can use a wired connection that is safer, faster and in some cases cheaper. That is why we're calling for a shift in mindset to wired and fiber connections first, wherever and whenever possible. My industry is installing the infrastructure for 5G at a very rapid rate, even though there are few, if any, devices that can take advantage of 5G technology today. That is why we feel it is responsible and necessary to call for a moratorium on 5G spectrum auctions, as well as a moratorium on the installation of new small cell antennas until Health Canada has completed its proper review of the scientific evidence and the full economic analysis has been completed. Estimates are there will be an additional $11 trillion in revenue from 5G technology. We also know it is very difficult for government regulation to keep pace with the rapid change in innovation and technology. That is why we're calling for a shift in responsibility and accountability so that my industry take responsibility to prove that technology is safe before it is released to the market. We have a model for chemicals that we can build on. This is similar to the accountability and responsibility that we expect from the automobile industry and from the pharmaceutical industry. Today, it is possible to install a small cell antenna 20 meters from a child's bedroom without any notification to the neighborhood and without any consent from the local municipality, town or city. That is why we're calling for That is why we're calling for a change in legislation that requires more transparency and notification to the local community and more consent from local government. We have provided many references for you to do your own research. We encourage you to go to c4st.org and read the full 5G appeal and review the over 50 references we provided. I mentioned the emfscientist.org of 250 scientists from over 40 countries around the world. There's then also a 5G appeal to the European Union from 350 scientists and medical doctors. Your bioinitiative group has reviewed over 1,800 peer-reviewed published papers that show harm to humans and the environment from wireless radiation. Dr. Deborah Davis at the Environmental Health Trust is part of Al Gore's team, and Dr. Joel Moskowitz at SaferEMR.com at the University of California, Berkeley, is a wealth of resources and references on the potential harm from wireless technologies. Dr. Magda Havis has lectured in over 30 countries and published over 200 papers.